You're going to call a meeting in order? Please sign your cell phones.
Okay.
Do you have another one? And then you can be off the mic.
He's double checking heads.
Please show our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, this is right or do you want to take?
Actually, I think councilor probably should be. I think they had planned that change in ordinance to be, look at that, to be, um, read by title. But it probably should be done at, at this point, just to make the record.
I'll make a motion to...
Be amended agenda for that.
I'll motion to amend the agenda.
As amended.
As amended?
I'll make a motion to amend the agenda as amended.
I'll send that.
Motion to get that out.
Put in paper.
Fine, if you get that out, okay.
Do you have a motion to amend the agenda? Motion is made in second, put in paper. Okay, move on down. Oh, any opposed? Michelle? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Hi, Michelle A. Perry. Do so, we swear.
Do so, we swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And all local ordinance of the town of Lakeview.
And all local ordinances of the town of Lakeview.
And that I will faithfully and honorably discharge.
And that I will faithfully and honorably discharge.
Myself and the office of Town Manager.
Myself and the office of Town Manager.
To which I have been hired.
To which I have been hired.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God. All right, now I'm going to introduce Michelle Perry, our new city manager. Paper will be doing an article on her, so just hang tough there. And I'll get back to you. Okay, let's move on down to guest speakers, communications, informational items. Any guest speakers? Public comment period. Citizens may address council on items on the agenda or not on the agenda out of respect of the council and other eminent standards. Please limit your comments to three minutes. You state your name and address for the record. Do you have any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ginger Casso, I live at two, two eight North J Street. And I don't have any public comment. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that the work session that we had scheduled for the Brownfields project to have a conference call is going to have to be rescheduled for probably a couple of weeks out. Because they're still in the process, there's other information that has come to light, and so we just want to wait until we get that.
Okay?
Okay? For Don's Market, sorry, forgot to put that part in.
I felt it in my head, but yeah. I figured you knew what I meant, but anyway, so we can just hold on.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, let's move on down. Any more public comment? Okay, let's move on down to open business.
I want, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry. Mayor, uh, Mike McGowan, four, three, five, Mountain View. Will, will, uh, the, will you or the council be introducing us to the town manager and explaining, you know, her background and how she came to Lakeview and...
I think, I think all that will come out in the newspaper.
Okay.
She's more than welcome to do it on her own during our, whatever, the agenda.
Oh. I'm going, yeah.
Okay, and then, and then, you have a question you can raise in the next meeting, is that, is that the thing?
We'll just, uh, we'll just let her, you know, she'll give all that information in the newspaper when they're, they're going to do an article on her. So it should be out in next week's paper, I think. Oh, not next week?
After the holidays.
Oh, after the holidays, okay.
Could I get a copy of her resume and perhaps I could share it with the people of the community tomorrow on the radio?
Certainly.
Yeah. Yeah, resume would be fine.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
I'm Sturridge, I'm on four twenty-nine South I Street. And, uh, in view of that, we have this particular weather, will there be, uh, the ability to clear the driveways as previous years? Will that still be in effect this year as well?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because...
Yeah, that's, that's planned.
We have, I know. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, open business, Snowgate?
So we discussed the Snowgate issue numerous times, and we've done some research. I've tried to get some more information on the Snowgate adaptability with our goodness. And I honestly just don't know that equipment, aside from the information I got from you, to, to really help talk to the, the general people, offer them new or used, things like that. So I was kind of asked that, um, Jeff, since you probably be the most qualified person, to speak with the manufacturers about whether or not those are adaptable. I mean, they ask questions about how dogs, and I'm like, good question, you know, I have no idea which guy. So, um, I did do a poll on the Lakeview announcements page, um, just a Survey Monkey one, and I've only had twenty responses, um, on it, but everybody, and, and I can't print them off unless I upgrade to the costly version. So the general feedback, and I will try to copy and paste, I was kind of hoping for more than twenty responses, but the general feedback is that large majority of the community, there was definitely a majority that would like the Snowgate. Majority were willing to pay when we gave them options, uh, one, and I think I emailed you guys all the links, because you guys all get the link to see the survey itself. Okay. Okay, so you guys saw it though. So it was like one dollar, two dollars, or three dollars, I think was the amount. The majority were actually in the middle there, I was a little surprised it's a two dollar amount, but they would be willing to pay for that Snowgate usage removal. There was definitely, um, slightly lower than half that do not have off-street parking, like we have discussed being an issue. And there was about ten public comments in there that I will copy and paste into an email for you guys, kind of showing you the feedback that the public had. There was issues with previous, um, snow removal, contractors, damaging things with a concern. There's issues about whether or not, whether suggestions or ideas of schedules for snow removal to be more, um, effective, I guess, possibly. That was really about the general basis, some, somebody said they probably wouldn't work if I had that, I couldn't go exactly. That, I don't know, but it just, um, you know, overall the feedback was positive. Not a lot of people seem to know about snow things, I guess.
What, what is it?
So a Snowgate is a hydraulic, um, arm that attaches to a plow. And as you go approach a driveway, you put the arm down, and it's a, a good sized piece that blocks the snow from being pushed into the driveway. You hold the snow and carry it over so you pass the driveway. And as you pass the driveway, you release it, so the snow doesn't build up behind the driveway. So it prevents snow firms, essentially. There's some pros and cons to using them, Ben's using them, a lot of, you know, Midwest towns and states are using them. There's pros such as, obviously, we don't have snowberms, which is a huge issue for a lot of people, especially the elderly. Some of the cons are that it's a little bit more time consuming to run them, is what has been shown, just because you have to really be efficient with putting that down, back up, and it's an extra piece of equipment that could fail. And then also, I believe it was really wet weather, wet snow that it doesn't work effectively for, and possibly ice, really hard icy snow can damage, um, you know, possible damage. But, um, the big pro is that it removes the snowberms, which would then cut down our private contractor expects personal use. So, um, some of the other things we've had some concerns with is that it looks like it might need to be a changed snow plow system. One goes in the front, what is it, your grader goes in the front?
Grader goes in the center.
In the center, and the plow comes behind it, which you guys don't normally do it exactly like that now, do you? You do?
Yep.
Okay, so...
The plow truck goes on the outside, the grader goes down.
Okay, I'm not sure if you guys work fully asleep. So, you know, there's some pros and cons, and, and new, it's somewhere around ten thousand, five to ten thousand per hand on manufacturer use, there's some fifteen hundred possibly, whatever's on the market use at the time. So that, that number doesn't necessarily hold true if that sells. But, um, you know, we talked about trying to use that for a season and see how it works, how effective it is, yeah.
But since the town is already obliged to clean drive, to clear driveways, must already have the equipment to be able to do that, is it necessary to buy or pay for and maintain that, a separate piece of equipment?
Well, and that's kind of what we're trying to weigh, because we actually pay private contractors, uh, to remove the snow from driveways. The town itself does not, as far as I know, aside from...
We, we do as time allows, but the majority of them are done by contractor.
By contractor, and, and we, I mean, it's always a struggle to find private contractors that have the insurance, the required equipment. I know we've got a lot of people doing it, it looks like on social media already posting, um, for fees, which is awesome, that we have people willing to do that, but, um, there's always never enough people or bodies out there to plow the driveways, it seems like that's enough, so, you know, which, that's never going to be fixed, I don't think, we'll always have a shortage of bodies. But it's an option to try to alleviate some of those, offset some of those, um, costs, and make it one less piece of, one less component of snow removal. So we would eliminate some of these, um, private contractors.
One of, one of the reasons that they've hired the private contractors to clear the driveway so these guys can try and get as much as a street plow as possible, while time allows, to, to focus on the streets and the school.
I don't know if I can introduce myself. Dustin, a state of seven, one, seven, six, five, great street. I brought up the Snowgate idea to Nikki in Darwin, and I would be interested in if you followed up with Baker City. Twenty years ago, I lived in Baker City, and I've lived in numerous towns in eastern Oregon. Twenty years ago, Baker City had a Snowgate on their piece of equipment, and that was really their sole motor grader with Snowgate to clear, uh, the streets with. I would say from the places I've lived, the downtown area of Baker City is probably fairly comparable to our, uh, street conditions and housing and off-street parking, off-street parking. Also, they try to have the closest representation to our winters, um, in eastern Oregon versus Ben, or some other areas where the snow kind of comes and leaves. It's not uncommon in that country to have snow forever, just like here. I, from my personal viewpoint of watching it work, I did not see any delays in operating the Snowgate and delay in reduced effectiveness of, of plowing. One thing I did see a difference of is, uh, the motor graders were on the outside of the street versus on the interior, and that's what the benefit was. And so, I, I think they probably have some pretty good insight, um, in, like I said, that very where I've lived in eastern Oregon, probably the most comparable to what our conditions would be, um, you know, with our city.
Yeah, and the intersections too, is a significant assistance, because it's supposed to take up intersections where we have here, obviously, lots of intersections, and that's another area that can really alleviate, um, having to have that removed, and that's an immediate removal, it's not something that you have to come back through for. So that, that to me was a big appeal, because I was going to say I was going to try to cross intersections and not make a surprise. But it's a learning curve if we, we adapt something like that, of course, and, and that's always tough, but...
Just to put this in perspective on the cost, it was, it was only, you know, a couple thousand dollars.
Even new, there were five thousand, some of the really fancy, you know, for new equipment, more for the ten thousand.
No, it'd be all right if people had off-street parking.
A lot of communities do it without that. I mean, a lot of paid places do it, and they don't have, I mean, we do have a snow plan in effect, don't we? Where people are supposed to, I thought I heard something, people are supposed to try to park off the street.
Just trailers.
Yeah, trailers, that's correct, it was just trailers. So, I mean, um, you know, there would definitely be some learning curve with it, but it's supposed to make that easier with even with the cars on the street. So, um, I think that's a great idea, taught in Baker City, they're very comparable to us, and I'd be more willing to have that conversation with them, um, so maybe we reach out to, to them. It's definitely something I think we're still looking into, I mean, I think it's worth the effort.
Anything else on that? Let's move on down to main business. We have a letter here from Susan Warner regarding the traffic on South I. Jeff went down and talked to her, requesting a permanent closure of I Street between fifth and sixth in the town of Lakeview, and our home, elementary school is located on the east side of I, eighty-eight, located on the west side of I, no residence access to their homes from the extreme. During school hours, we put up temporary roadblocks to deter vehicle and foot traffic from traveling down I Street. However, we still experience vehicle and foot traffic through this street, creating unsafe situations for our students. For example, our third grade students are housed in the eighty-eight, but used to Fremont playground. Each day, they are crossing the street multiple times. All of our Fremont students walk across the street for music, B.E., cafeteria services. Our students are coming into contact with the public due to the foot traffic that we feel is unsafe. Our goal is to always be diligent in improving school safety and security for our students. We can achieve this goal by permanently closing I Street between fifth and sixth, streets to vehicle and foot traffic. I look forward to discussing this issue with you on November twenty-sixth. Please do not hesitate to contact me any questions, Susan Warner, elementary principal. Uh, Jeff and I went down this morning to talk to her, then Jeff went back this afternoon, so I'll let him...
Well, we just, I just spoke to her actually this afternoon on the phone. And, and maybe we should let her speak to what her concerns are beyond what this letter is. There's a little bit more to it, they've had some lock on traffic, foot traffic coming out of playgrounds that are, are quite a concern, and, uh, could be hard to deal with. I don't, I don't know that that street closure on a permanent basis is the answer. Daryl has some thoughts on that as well, but it would be a very complicated process to close that street completely due to the fact we have, uh, people, you know, that have a franchise, B.E., the power company, the cable companies. We have geothermal sewer and water in the street as well. But, uh, Daryl, did you want to add to that?
Well, closing the street permanently, um, you know, that appears to be a vacation. I, I don't think we can vacate the street, we have too many utilities in the street. Foot traffic uses the sidewalk up and down to the high school, down to the residential areas. So a permanent vacation would, would get rid of that street basically altogether. I don't, we cannot, I don't recommend we do that. We, we cannot do that, we have a lot of utilities in the way. We can work with the school if they want to install some better gates or something at fifth street or sixth street than they have now, the traffic cannot enter there at all during school hours. It could be shut and then opened after school hours are, um, not in operation. I think the problem now, traffic drives around with small barriers they have. Better permanent barriers if they can drive through, it could be open back up. Foot traffic onto the campus, um, the eighty-eight school is not fenced in front. I can see that as a problem. Fremont is, is fenced on that side, although I don't believe it in the heat. But, uh, closing up the foot traffic would drive the pedestrians to walk around Fremont School where there are no sidewalks now on sixth. So, it would lead to those type of issues, as well as emergency vehicles, ambulance, that sort of thing. I think we need to work something with the school, make it a little better for it, but, um, a permanent closure on the street is very difficult for us to do.
Well, no, I do see a lot of, uh, several vehicles parked in between fifth and sixth on I Street there. I don't know if it's, I guess it's school employees.
I, I don't know, I see vehicles there too, but I, I don't know if they're school employees or not.
So I see the concern, because I think that the school's making a proactive step towards security, I would assume is a big issue, especially these days. My thoughts are, I one hundred percent appreciate that. My thoughts are parking is an issue down there during sports as well, so where would we mitigate that parking to? It's such an issue down there, I mean, it's a mission down there in general, I think. But at the same time, I see the security concern a hundred percent, yeah, people drive right around those barricades. But is your concern more of the foot traffic, or the, you see more of a concern with the foot traffic, or the... Thank you, Nikki. Our concern has been vehicle traffic for quite some time, and we have people that run over the barricade, we have three metal barricades in the front, we have one in the backside and then in the south side so that our buses can come around there, and those are put in and out daily to accommodate the, the traffic in the, when school is not in session. And we had students almost hit. We were, we were releasing students from the one barricade, said a barricade was run over by someone that didn't, wasn't paying attention, and we had kids in the crosswalk at the time right next to where that person ran over the barricade. We have foot traffic, and we have, um, folks coming in and out using that street to access the hospital that are on campus that have mental illness issues. We've had multiple incidences this fall where we have people that are using that street back and forth to walk to their appointment at the hospital, and, um, we're just trying to increase our school safety, and I can't do that with that street open. And I understand that utilities are an issue, and, and you guys have commitments as a city for that, but I really think that we've always been able to work together with a great partnership that we could figure out a way to shut down that foot traffic and keep our kids safe. This is, our, our, our population has changed dramatically, and I do have most all of Hay fans. We have two more gates to put up. We put up a gate, um, back in there where deliveries are only allowed at certain times to decrease the amount of vehicles back there, but all of Hay is fenced. And Fremont is all fenced for the most part, there aren't gates on everything, but we're working on fencing all of it. But then the street becomes my biggest issue, where we don't have the capacity at Fremont to have a cafeteria or a gym over there, those kids have to go back and forth across the street to, to access those services. We have made significant gains, we have rearranged those buildings so that we've moved all, moved all our specialized services and our title services into the Fremont building to decrease the amount of student traffic back and forth, but I still have a little bit that I need to deal with, and, um, the folks that are trying to access our kids, sometimes it's custodial parents, custodial parents trying to access their kids from that street instead of going to the offices, or just people that are not mentally very sound coming through, and it's very concerning to us as a school district. So even if you put in a, a big metal gate, such as something could be opened and closed, that, to, in essence, close the street, there would be no way to actually prevent the foot traffic. If we cycle fence the entire, okay, that's what I'm... South side, yes, and then we would reroute our bus traffic and our delivery traffic, and our parking would have to move, our, our staff parking would have to move. But we're willing to do that for the security of our, of our students.
I don't know that many people know that foot traffic was not allowed. I mean, I, I walk a lot down in that area, and I walk through there during school hours, and there's still posting about foot traffic, it's a motion traffic, you know, barrier thing. So, um, I mean, I understand your concerns, and I won't do it again, but, um, anyway, uh, I think we need to, we'll get together with a couple of people and, and come up with some plan that would actually work better than actually closing a street permanently, because I think there's, there are issues there that...
Just to be clear, I don't think we've ever agreed as a town to close the foot traffic through there. I know what they're saying is you want it to be stopped, and that's why vacating the street would be important.
Yes.
For a security measure, but currently it's still open, foot traffic, and that's why people still walk through there. The road itself is closed, but there's still, you know, foot traffic. Sidewalk is open. But, yeah, I mean, I've, I've seen, I've been there many times, you know, and seen, seen what they're talking about.
Yeah, I, I think there might be some solutions we can try to work out without closing it permanently.
Couple comments. Again, Dustin is Davidson, uh, this time I'm a board member of the school, Lake County School District number seven. These are not the opinions of the board, these are my opinions, so put it at that. Couple things I heard, you know, vacating the street and the utilities cannot be vacated and have an easement for the utilities through that, that street without causing an issue. I think there's a workaround of that. Emergency vehicle traffic, I think that we're probably hard pressed to say that any time during school hours that an ambulance or a police officer is going to blow through there anyways. And quite frankly, uh, if you look at I Street, it starts at the, that portion of I Street starts at the high school, so it's not a three, the entire town street like H Street is. So you're only got a couple blocks of, what, South Third to Fifth, that even would use that to get to the hospital. Jumping up to H Street and, uh, around, or going wind lane to Mountain View and around is not going to add anything, uh, for emergency services, shouldn't be an issue. Safety and security, you know, in the last couple of years, being on the board, we've had a handful of, uh, security threats, uh, in our school, and it's, uh, created a, quite an uproar around the community in, in increasing the security of our schools. Uh, I think it's a huge priority for me that we do that, along with that is the safety aspect, just having street traffic crossing, or potentially crossing when our kids are crossing the street just during normal school days is a pretty big issue for me. You know, I think, uh, on the security at, uh, point, and I haven't talked to Sheriff Taylor here, but it seems to me that we have a heck of a lot of access points to our buildings, and if we can limit access points, it's going to be easier to provide security and see who's coming and going. And a fence around the entire compound to limit those access points, he's not telling me to shut off, but, those access points could potentially help with that, along with some other measures of, within our schools. Parking, you know, parking is just not great down there. Parking, you know, parking is just not very down there. And there really isn't a good solution, but I guess I challenge you all to go to a sporting event outside of this community like in Medford or Klima Falls, and if you haven't yet, and you got kids in their eighty-hay, you will in their high school, and you gotta walk. That's just the nature of it. You walk to those events from wherever the parking is, hate to say it, but. And lastly, you know, this, the district hired a third-party consultant. Scott was there at this public meeting. Hired a third-party consultant to do a facilities assessment of our buildings. Our buildings are in pretty tough shape. They need a significant infusion of some funds to fix things. Either remodel, replace, repair, whenever it may be. Been a lot of discussion on the board about potential bond major coming up to do something with that. Eighty-Hay currently is at a hundred and ten percent of capacity for room for students. We have some other issues there just beyond, you know, this security and safety aspect of it. I, as a board member, I know if we were to get a bond, I'd be very reluctant to put a lot of money into eighty-hay as long as that street is going to be how it is currently today because it's a huge issue from a security and safety aspect. It's just putting money to fix part of the problem, not the whole thing. In my opinion, we'd be better served to relocate that entire facility. That's going to have an impact upon that neighborhood, potentially dropping property values in that neighborhood if the school is no longer there. There's a lot of ramifications, so, you know, I, I understand to hear what Mr. Anderson is saying and what Bizer God would party as far as vacate or whatever. But there's a long-lasting implications to whatever direction that goes. And I think it needs to be kept in mind that it's a pretty big issue that needs some serious consideration rather than just the first, first hiccup saying, no, we can't do it.
What is Jeff or Daryl's business for you? What are the problems with allowing easements there?
What would be a problem like?
Accessing our utilities? As long as we have an easement to access them there. That's all. We also have a credit problem. We have that. We have other utilities too that we don't have control of. Located in the right way, phone, power, yeah, that sort of thing.
Which, I mean, is it not impossible?
No, I'm afraid it's not possible with the streets. It's possible. It's easy to talk about it. It just, it definitely makes it more complicated. Makes it complicated now on our street system. You also have a liability with the hospital being right there. There is a liability with that because if you close that road and hospitals used to use it, you have somebody on the other side of the school that has a heart attack. It takes an ambulance thirty seconds longer to get there. There's going to be a loss. I've been down that road. I've been down that on temporary closures and road construction.
So, here's, here's where I stand on this. I, I handle the property vacations for the county, bring the board commissioners. And there's public carrying. It always has to happen with that process. I, I very well believe that that process is the same here in the town. So, if we're to move forward on that, this idea, every adjacent yard to that may use those streets as well as utilities, as well as anyone that has utility in the road, but also, you know, the hospital and others would get notified. And then you have a public carrying issue. I think that's, I think we're, I think that's where we're going to flush out a lot of these concerns.
And there's one other prerequisite for a city. With a municipal city, there is a four-hundred-foot radius at both ends of the street that you're supposed to be vacating. And to even come for us, you have to get two-thirds of the adjacent landowners in that radius first before the petition can get filed. So, that's the, that's the different prerequisite.
So, that would be, that'd be that if the landowner themselves, or the landowners adjacent to that street ask for the vacation.
Correct. If we do it ourselves, you not, then you still get everybody noticed and you still didn't have them. So, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and so, in this case, I mean, the, the landowners adjacent to that street or on that street, that section of the street. Because, I mean, where I, I process it, if, if there's a section of the street and there's no, you know, there's other routes, you don't.
Doesn't work that way. When it comes to us from a particular petitioner, it, basically the road sits right here and there's, and there's four.
The statute is different, if we miss that.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that makes sense that it would be because of, yeah.
You have to go to the terminus of the street of where you're going to vacate it. And then it's a four-hundred-foot.
Which is an easy notion to make.
It'll pick up people down to Seventh Street. And it'll pick up people up to Ford.
So, I, I would like to, you know, get the hospitals input and all the adjacent owners input. Because I think that the school has a legitimate concern. I, I didn't say this earlier. Most of you know it's a hospital, I'm a school board member. And we did bring this up and that's, that's why this is moving forward again. It's been brought up when we talked about the closure of the street during the school hours and making that a one-way street. I really think that from, I think it's Fourth Street around, you know, it ought to be a full one-way street. I think it really only technically is on, on this street there. But coming down I Street, wrapping around that little L, it may be a full one-way street as well. I, I think that, you know, there's a process. This is just a discussion and we can entertain a whole lot more discussion. But I think we should move forward on at least having a public carry on this and just seeing what, what the opinions are. At that point, then we could make a decision on, you know, having all the line from all the stakeholders and landowners around there and see if this is something we can support with the board. Obviously, our planner, you know, Jeanne Cannon should be, you know, involved in that process as well. And looking at our TSP, shoot out the three weeks. So, and it's going to take some time to schedule this anyway, so.
And it might be good for the school to reach out to those landowners and see if they can get those consents ahead of hand. Because if you, if you get those, then it's pretty much.
Yeah, it could be a lot easier.
It could be a lot easier because that just, that just raises the skid. So, that might be the way of, is get that radius identified and then talk to everybody in that radius and see if you can get that. Is, so that turns.
And I can, I can help the schools and help those, Jeanne, or whatever, just that we're. So, yeah, other question. So, four hundred feet would be about a block right from that area, basically, in Chicago?
Yeah.
Like a block around really the whole school area, basically the blocks around the whole school area, correct?
And.
Are we looking at the statue?
Not the, not the full, not the full area. It's, like you said, you go to the end of the road, you go four hundred feet and then it's two hundred feet on either side of the road, which in that case would be just school property. So, it's really the people on the ends, your end caps, that's where the radius is that you've got to worry about.
It would seem like there'd be a whole lot of people, you know, but the hospitals under the first, you know, so.
It's a, it's a serious issue. The liability there, you just need to make sure that if it goes through, I mean, I'm, I'm for it. Don't, don't get me wrong. But I've had, I've been in lawsuits before with hospitals and road crews, which is, that's what I get in California, so. And usually when you get in a, in litigation over something like that, you lose. We had a guy that passed away and part of their deal was if they got there five minutes sooner or three minutes sooner, wouldn't be a liability. We lost and we would be checked for it. That's my biggest concern is the hospital.
It looks like the children's safety compromise is a hospital, so I don't think we can.
Right, but they go back to this is the way it's always been. Why do we have to change it now?
Well, that's why we're almost in a liability situation right now with us already agreeing to close out there in the school year, you know, for food traffic.
There might also be, and there also might be a middle ground where you close the, where you put fencing on, well, whatever, and the fence gets locked down. You do a temporary closure on the sidewalk during school hours and then more, a more severe gate. So, there might be an interim where you don't have to go through all this expense. So, my suggestion is maybe both groups should come up with a working group and look at some of the various options. Maybe we've got a couple of councilor, a couple of school members, city engineer and planner. Maybe everybody sit down and look at what pair, here are the various options. What's going to be most cost-effective? What's going to do what you want? And then come up with where you pick one particular route versus another. Because a temporary closure might work. If you get everything there without having to go through this whole process, that also then subjects you guys to, because this is an appealable decision to higher land use authority as well. So, if you get a neighbor that's actively happy about it, it's not that hard for somebody to appeal to the land use appeal board. So, that's not something you want to get. That's why getting everybody on board as much as possible for whatever decision you go to. That way you're one and done. It's probably your best bet.
Yeah, I've actually seen that, Ben, Jeff, where they put gates up all ends of the school property and close the road, sidewalk, chain link fence, chain link gates. They do that and open, they go to the center and go. We are in all our schools, with the schools that are in the worst areas where they're having the same issue you guys are having with the traffic. And then because of the hospital, the maintenance staff, they're bad.
Mm-hmm, something like that.
Yeah, but it's just two gates. They're closed, they're adlocked and they're closed from the time school starts, so in school.
And you put massive, massive signs on them that said, you know, this is closed. I mean, that you can't miss them, so that's.
It's, it's been pretty effective down there. But I completely understand where you're at, you know. My wife works there and I understand what she deals with. So, there is definitely something that needs to be done. There's no doubt about that. We just got to find the right fit.
Just a minute, Stuart. Will, have your hand up.
Well, on behalf of the school, you're, you know, being the principal down in that complex for twelve years, I, I really truly recognize the, the safety factor. I had, when I was principal down there, I had many cars blow through those barricades. To one point where they just absolutely ran through and destroyed them and splintered them out. I'd like Mr. Headland's notion of having a working group to sit down and maybe come up with some discussions as far as, you know, something we could do to improve that, whether it's close the street or come up with some decent barricade solutions that not only close off the street but also the sidewalks as well. So, I'm totally for that. I think that's a good idea. That's what the town wants to have as a plan.
I'm just trying to comment that most people walk in the street. Use the sidewalk too.
Just sidewalk.
That, I mean, if you had gates that ran from the chain link fence, from chain link fence of the schools that are currently there now, and those are closed, you're not going to walk around the end of it. You're not going to climb over it. Because those are closed to shut the sidewalk and the street down to kill the end of both ends. It's good in theory. Sure, I'm just saying it's good in theory. I don't think people.
Right.
The only, the only other issue would be them jumping over the fence and at that point the trespass and then the sheriff's department gets involved and they get dead.
Right.
So, yeah, work session is good with, you know, a school board, you know, not the school board, but the school office.
And like I said, the other, the only other concern you're going to have out there, I want to make sure we don't get sideways with ADA issues. I don't think so, but it's something we would have to look at for the sidewalks.
As long as you post the sidewalks closed ahead and you have a usable detour, which is pretty easy to set up.
Exactly.
So, I think long-term vision here, there's, there's a whole lot that we should, ought to be looking at. Because we talked about parking that you brought up during sports events and testing pretty right. You, you at other communities, you walk a great distance to get to everything. You know, we, the school owns are probably on, on the south side of the creeks, on both sides, you know, on of that, this road you're talking about. And all of those could be improved at some point. Now, obviously it's a funding issue, but, but could be more stat parks or whatever. You could, you know, do a whole lot of changes there. But it's just, it's dollars and, and we're really talking about safety at this point. I mean, in my mind, to really eliminate all this eventually, you need to take up that road. And, and the easements that go through the lawn right now on, on eighty-hay where our pipes come through that lawn and then you connect into the schools.
I don't know that, Darwin, I don't know that you're able to take up the road because the issue is you all, not all, they actually have to have a driving service and piece equipment has to be able to get in there if something breaks to, so you would have, I don't know that. If, if you did do the vacation, I think you would still, I think you would still leave the roads.
That's why I brought up our utilities right now are in the field. We kind of cross right close to the hospital, kind of cross. Do a gear so that you dealt with the extra rocks that tore up and, and rain on the geothermal pipes. So, I mean, it's possible. I mean, definitely possible. And I would love to see that grass all the way through and, and, you know, cross soon or to, to get parking on the south side of the creek then to walk over for, you know, AYSO games and all the other stuff that happens, events that happen on those fields. We need to have a community, you know, is that, is that something that we can just, you know, set up outside of this? We're not willing to listen to it tonight, knowing that we, there's a whole lot more research that needs to be done.
Why don't, why don't you and Scott, Daryl and Jeff?
In the school.
Yeah. Get, get together.
Set up a time and, you know.
See what you can come up with.
We can help pick them up or something, or get something from the hospital.
But there is a process and I think if we want to get it out to the landowners to, you know, find out what, who they are and what that distance is and then, you know, even invite them to, you know, work session kind of meeting just to kind of go over a little bit, the hospital.
I appreciate you guys considering this was time for us to ask, so that we can, and I appreciate your time.
That would be a great concern. Especially with the issues and everything.
And it's one less road we have to move through. Or while.
Okay. Anyway, you guys, you guys get together and then come back to us. Okay? All right, let's move on down. So, there we go to Ornamentate Seventy.
Ornamentate.
Ornamentate for, because they have a practice of feeding maiden deer. Do I hear a motion on?
So, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion first on the street boards and the interstate motion. I'll have to be, I think it's honest that I've not read this yet. You know, if there's, there's more, and I apologize for that because I should have came in prepared and however. So, if you guys want to give a short three of all, that's fine. I know we've discussed this for a while. You know, and if there's fines or, you know, crambers. Is this modeled off of any other?
This is modeled off of Burns'. This was, that was the simplest one that I could find that would cover the areas that we need to, to enable ODFW. I think, like as the council suggested prior meetings, to get ODFW to come in and even look at potentially doing any kind of abatement for this type of population, you have to have a ban on feeding. And the, and again, that's not a guarantee that they'll do it, but that at least triggers then being able to do a study and then if the tier beyond what they consider carrying capacity, then there is trapping options or poll options available. So, that's what this does. It's, it's one of the simpler ones. A lot of the other ones get a lot more complicated because bigger areas, human interface, things of that nature. But this does, this doesn't prohibit feeding the birds, doesn't prohibit feeding cats. It's, like you said, larger lives, larger elk, who obviously we don't see in town, but deer, all of those. And you want all of those present. Yeah, bears as well. Yep, so.
Big cats. Big cats.
Yes.
So, this is a violation and not, I mean, it's not like a.
This is not a crime. It's violations.
It's not a crime. It's, it's simply something that we would then send out. I mean, it's not going to come from the sheriff's department, right, but finally it does.
Uh, no, the fines and things of that nature is something that, um, it would either be, um.
So, the town will be entitled to collect from any person rather than the schools.
And added.
You know, the attorney fees, none of the fees costs.
And it's either done by a peace officer or any other official that we allow to enforce our nuisance ordinances. So, it's got similar.
Darwin, no, thank you.
Yeah, this is not fair.
No, they aren't.
We get done if they're passing the check.
No, it's going to be an interesting situation. I, I really wish we had reached out to Burns and see how this is working. I know that they ordered someone to replace that, like eight months ago. I'm wondering how many people they fined so far and if, you know, how the appeal process worked on those fines and just what amount of staff time this is going to add in. You know, neighbor busted another neighbor because we didn't work here in there long, there long.
And those are, those are all issues with those particular ones and that seems to be a problem statewide. But on the same token, just because you have it on the books doesn't mean you necessarily have to do anything with it. The prohibitions there, ODFW says you have to have it. ODFW doesn't say that you have to get every single person that ever. I mean, obviously you don't want to have laws that are paper hikers, but on the same token, you know.
So, so by implementing the standard, ODFW then can come in and remove.
Do their study and if the, and if the study says that it's indicated, then they can come and move. But they can't do anything without this.
So, in that part of the spec- So in that part of the special, I'd really like to hear from Burns, where they're at with ODFW actually looking forward on anything, on the study or.
They have different ODFW.
Well, I know that they do, but they, but still, it's a process, I mean, they still have ODFW, and what, you know, has ODFW, you know, in the last year done with Burns' problem?
Correct, because.
I lived there too, so I, I know the problems very similar to yours.
Do you wanna table this until next meeting?
Well, I don't think, yeah, I, I, I'd wanna know more from.
Certainly.
How this will roll out.
One of the, the pluses with that is that ODFW can use, if they use euthanasia, they can, um, use the meat for meat pantry locally. So that is a positive out of it, that meat would be a huge benefit to the community, it's not wasted meat.
If Darwin, what, if, if passed in this, ODFW will come in during one of our meetings and explain to what they can and can't.
Well, it makes it better on the basis of the classes, maybe some of them invite, like, that's what I'm saying.
But yeah, it's a public information, like, can it be a state law or half, that I'm here to help you guys on that.
So, but I just wanna.
I gotta say, well, now, because ODFW.
Well, and that's where it's different, because our, our officers and our biologists in this community are the ones that would make our decisions versus Burns' is, you know.
And I'm not, the, the scene should.
Quick question, what, at what level is ODFW operating, is that like a state law that they're trying to encourage smaller cities to incorporate that law so it's state?
It's not that they're trying to encourage, it's that.
As ODF, is that state level trying to, how the municipal's adopt better law?
It's a state law. It's a state law that requires that in order for ODFW.
For them to do any kind of abatement services, because they're.
So I guess they put like a hierarchy and balance in place before ODFW comes in and says, oh, there's too many deer, so we think, yet the municipality says, no, there's not, you know, so there's more cohesion between agencies, because all the agencies will work together to take, is what the state statute says and, and firm a conversation with ODFW to analyze and figure out the best way to mitigate the issue.
So what's the? Well, my, also, my understanding real quick is that the deer in town is just merely a symptom of a larger problem, that this passing ordinance like this would be just like putting a band-aid on it, not actually addressing the, the real problem that he says that's why, that's driving the deer into town. And that, that's all I have, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hey, so I have been taking a ton of complaints, deer getting fed, getting fed with meat, bacon grease, they're getting leftover food from people dumping it, they're leaving their pumpkins and dumping them in the alleys, that stuff is not good for them. I talked to ODFW personally, they do not want the deer being fed, yes, they get that they eat our flowers, they get into our gardens, they encourage people to try to fence their yards a little more, some people can't obviously do that, it's harder for them, I get that. People have come to me asking, please, do what you guys can, see what the town can do, ask the council, ask Jeff, can you please do something with the deer? I called ODFW again, voiced the concerns, I get it, at least two or three times a week about the deer, otherwise they're gonna start shooting them. I encourage them, please do not do that, or you will be the one in trouble. I encourage them to please call ODFW themselves, if they don't believe the information that I have relayed back to them, that ODFW has given to me. This is not just the deer finding food themselves, it's people are literally feeding them this stuff, and it's making them sick. And he, at ODFW, voiced his concern on that, because that's part of why the deer in town are getting sick. I've watched people dump stuff over, I've seen pumpkins in alleys when I've gone around to do ordinances, people need to stop feeding them.
And that's not even if they're necessarily intentionally feeding them, that's, that's an issue of abatement issues, you know, you need to secure your garbage, that, that is, you know, dogs, raccoons, whatever it may be, you know, we, some towns have turkeys, some towns have, you know, raccoons, turkeys. I had a coyote pass me right in town the other day, daylight, so, yes, we understand the animals are moving in, unfortunately, we can't control the bigger reasons behind that, but, um, even such issues as securing a crash, not dumping in alleyways for numerous reasons, because it's not allowed, um, will help with this. We, we now have incurred personal loss, financial loss, pets have been lost, and, um, safety concerns with, with the public.
So, if, if this ordinance is passed, does that set into motion, um, that the town is going to be responsible for, uh, policing this, so that, you know, if somebody's caught, um, feeding a, a deer, then they call in and the sheriff or his deputies have to go out and deal with it? Or somebody associated with the town or appointed by the town, or is this just giving ODFW the permission or basically to do the study and start doing something to help us with this?
So to answer your question, it says this ordinance should be enforced by the sworn peace officer authorized to enforce a law of town, and any other town official authorized to administer town land use, development nuisance building, and other regulations, so, it's not remitting the sheriff's department. I mean, I, I think it's completely ridiculous to think that we should have our sheriff out there trying to.
Right, well, that's what I was trying to find out.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm wasn't saying that you were thinking that they should, I'm just saying, that's why this is, I have a hard time with this so far, um. I understand we're kind of in the catch, right, because if ODFW is gonna say it's not our problem, although it's their problem, um, it is their problem, and it always will be their problem, why do we have to create an ordinance, um, to say, ODFW, do your job, I mean? So, in this case, like, we got a two hundred fifty dollar fine, it is part of this draft ordinance, and I'd rather just say it's like a dollar. I mean, like, I don't want people getting fined on this, I mean, really, ODFW should just get the deer out of here if that's what we want, but the problem is, these are resident deer, I mean, if you've lived here long enough, you know that they're having babies here, and then those babies are having babies, I mean, it's, they're all, these are generational deer, in, in a lot of cases, right? So, um, you know, I don't know, you know, they also say, ODFW also says that, that it's, to take them out of the area, these deer won't last out, you know, actual wild, so.
That's fine.
Yeah, which is cool.
Which is.
Yeah, 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 which is cool, cool too, so, that's not our problem, right, but.
My, my understanding from what I've read for most communities to deal with this is if they do do something, it's a cult. Their relocation is not, like, like, yeah, so that's, that's, it never has to.
No, because they have access to the area they were born within the.
Exactly.
So, here's, here's my thought, I would like to move that to the higher fine, just like there are laws about speeding and other things. My hope is that it detours those who just are going to choose to do the right, because there is a consequence. Yeah, it's not gonna detour everybody, because they're all vote, do those, choose to break the rules regardless, but, um, my hope is that it will detour those who are like, ooh, yep, don't wanna get busted on that one, don't want a two hundred fifty dollar fine, so it will still cut back on the issue of the actual feeding, which is doing the animal more harm. Um, and, and you know, I kinda think it's one of those things where we look and see how it goes, because it helps, I don't certainly think we need to spend the kind of time and effort facing it, I certainly don't think the sheriff's office needs to police it, um, yes, there's things that we are trying to work on for a, um, nuisance officer, and, um, that would be in, in that officer's position, but, I mean, it's a long ways out. I think, my hope is that this will detour those who'll choose to do the right, because there's a steep line, and then the next step is that it gives ODFW, the town, the ability to request ODFW to, to analyze and find a solution. That's why, and I think that's why I'd be best to move that fine to higher, a dollar's not necessary.
Well, and, but, having been on the, you know, on the side of the fence of having a buck that's got six points on one side and seven on the other, charging me in my backyard over my dogs that are, you know, like ten pounds apiece, little yappers, because he, you know, he wants to get in and eat my apples, but he's been grazing along with six of his other buddies that are a little smaller than him, on the stuff that my neighbors on the other side of the alley are throwing into the alley, every day, we're not talking about one neighbor, we're talking about three or four. So, you know, something, whether it's an ordinance about throwing your garbage into the alley, or if it has something to do with the deer, something's gotta give. And I know that I'm not the only one that's experiencing that, on the block in front of me, there's an alley that goes all the way through, and the same thing is happening there. So, these guys have got it all figured out, and it's all great and wonderful, but they're pretty daunting, and there already have been animals that have been hurt, and I hear all the time about people that are being charged. So somebody, a, a person is gonna get hurt at some point.
And that's, that's my thought, is we're all.
It's just a matter of time.
So it doesn't matter if it's ODFW or the town of Lakeview or whatever, I think we have to do something, I don't know what the answer is, I wish I did. But I, it, it's gotten to the point of really being crazy, because these, these, these boys running gangs, and they're pretty, you know, they're pretty moxie about what they do. I mean, I was really surprised that the gang of five has turned into the gang of eleven out on North J Street, I mean, it's crazy.
I've experienced this a couple weeks ago, having a fire, not in town, you know. With the kids outside, very noisy children, and.
Well, they come right up, vacuum the dough off, and then they came right next to that fire with us there, and we were like, wow, I just, they're, they're becoming desensitized to humans, and I think we all know that. So, that is, and then we drive it through town today, I think from Barney Brothers to about here, there was eight, eight deer I saw, which they just kept waiting to bob and weave in between, and I just kept thinking they're gonna hit the car again, because, you know, apparently they don't see it, and it's gonna cause an accident. So I, I think we just, I think there is some revision maybe that we need to look at in the clause, or.
I think the, the enforcement of this is the biggest problem, it's not that we don't, I agree with you to not feeding the deer, for all the reasons mentioned by everyone here, but. Um, no, the enforcement of it is the problem, and I think two hundred fifty dollars for a first offense is probably a little steep, you know, you know.
And you guys could adopt a fine schedule, something like first offense seventy-five, one fifty, two fifty, or something like that, this is all, this is a draft just for, for.
Who's gonna take care of it, that's, I mean, who's gonna actually put those?
Well, also.
I think we have to actually, because if we put this in place and then we don't have anybody, it's unfunded.
Yeah, so hopefully that we can, we can eventually fund the nuisance officer.
Well, we'll get there, but this is gonna be a.
But the, the point is, is that people are gonna be calling dispatch and saying, someone is violating this ordinance, so who's gonna do it?
Yeah, yeah.
Who's gonna go and plan?
It's a whole lot of work that we haven't thought about, I mean, a lot of calls.
Darwin, we already get those calls, Dawn, I think those calls are in.
Dispatch might be getting them already too.
Oh, they are.
But that's why I just wanna know, like, from another community who's implemented it, how successful is it? Because if we're gonna put in another law and it's not working really well, what are we doing? I mean, there's gotta, maybe we just need to, let them say, forget that, just come and get these deer out of here, we don't need them.
Yeah, there's one law, I have the conversation.
They're all getting. That's not a law that's been around for five hundred years, but obviously it was something that could change and we can.
Yes, and it's very specific, we're in a conversation with John here, this task, you're like, this show must.
Well, yeah, well, that's a long way through the legislature.
Yeah, so.
I'm wrong.
Darwin, it sounds like what needs to happen is that we just need to jump through some hoops, in order for the fish and wildlife to come and help. I mean, we're stuck in the minutia of it, the, the goal is, we've gotta implement this first, jump through that hoop, and jump through the other hoop, and all of the rest of this stuff is gonna take care of itself eventually, I mean, it's gonna be burdensome, but I, I do think that we have to stay focused on, what is our goal? I mean, the goal is to get the deer out, and we have to follow, we have to jump through two hoops, right?
I think that's partly why, I mean.
And again, say.
It almost feels like we're saturated to me, like, we have too many, like, before, you know.
Well, that, of course, we all agree with that, but the problem is, the, yeah, the enforcement, I mean.
Yeah, but.
And part, and part of the recent guidance that ODFW had that law got implemented, it was a compromise between the environmental groups that are, don't do any enforcement and whatever, and the idea was, okay, we don't want towns being able to have coal options or removal options when you have, um, people act, actively feeding them and tracking them in, versus.
You're baiting them, so.
Exactly, exactly, baiting issues.
You're not gonna be able to deal with the issue of people being.
Not there, you know.
Correct, so that's, that's, that's what the compromise was with that particular bill, so that's kind of the, they had to really, because again, anytime they do any kind of a kill measure in this state, it's a pretty dicey proposition, I mean, that, that was how they kept that law going to a lawsuit, so.
So I am willing to table this per, um, per the next meeting and have a conversation with the town of Burns, and, you know, for information, I mean, there's no reason we. Passing this today, passing this today is not gonna change two weeks from now, you know, I mean, I think it's good discussion and I, I see both sides of it, so, you know.
I think we need to change the fine schedule.
The other option too is to.
Yeah, I know.
Have the fine, we need to do a different.
The other option too is, remember, we, we normally have, I mean, the first violation can be two fifty, but if it's handled the way we're handling notices right now, the first letter goes out as a warning. So it does, it does take a couple of steps, and with past practice, there's usually a couple of letters that are sent out by the town before it gets to that point.
There's still a lot of staff time, and it's not.
That's a good, well, it is, but, but, and it may be initially a bigger staff time than after people know about it, but, um.
And that doesn't have to put in the ordinance section, just what we've done, is that, that, that comes down to discretion of, that's just like a, that's just like a, a peace officer giving somebody a traffic ticket, they can give them a warning too, and so we have that, we have that same prosecutorial discretion with this, but again, the fine schedule is your guys' decision, I mean, that, that doesn't have to.
Well, I actually like the fine schedule, because we've been, you know, I've been meeting with people, talking about the dog ordinance and trying to update that, and that, that fine is, is like insignificant.
Um, and I think that would be something I would really go hand in hand with this, is a fine schedule, it's more consistent with, with them.
No, I, I don't think a lot of people are gonna know about this for a while, I think they don't really know that it's going, they don't read the paper that much or whatever, it's, just needs to get the word out. And I think the warning letter is actually a good idea, for us to start with.
And again, and you, you, and you don't have to put that, and you do not, that's the type of thing you do not have to put in an ordinance, you can just do it that way, you can say, you know what? We've got this out there, but for the first ninety days or six months of this, we're gonna start with warnings and education and try to get voluntary compliance, and then we'll go there. So you guys have a lot of options, or like you said, you can go with a fine schedule, it's really your guys' pleasure, both routes are legal.
Well, we can go with both of those, actually, a fine is good enough.
Yep. Yep, so that's, whatever the council's pleasure, I can re-rap it that way, but I would not change the rest of it, and I would still leave it with peace officer and everything else, just in case. Like I said, because for a really obnoxious offender, you may need to get it to, you may need to get the sheriff's department involved if, after they've been wrapped in an offense a couple of times.
I just don't want the sheriff's office to be expected to come down to it and, we, we say, hey, but in our ordinance and your agreement, as you have.
Correct.
Your agreement.
Yeah, that's why we're supposed to.
If you're looking, if you're looking for someone to go talk to these people, I'll do it, I don't have a problem.
Did you have something?
Sheriff Taylor.
Sheriff Taylor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, uh, important that everybody recognizes the fact that if there's a, an aggressive animal that threatens animals in your fenced yard, or you as a person, it doesn't make any difference who's responsible to respond, if it's an aggressive animal, we'll respond, if it's a deer, we'll dispatch it and put it down and, and get it to a food bank, but, I, well, my emphasis here, i- i- if you're being attacked by an animal, call, we'll respond. Um, if somebody is feeding an animal pumpkin out in the alley, we're not going to go to that, because we can't keep them over. Well, well, the calls that we have are serviced right now, but, if it's a dangerous animal, call right away and, and we'll respond to it. Another option that we have too, instead of the Oregon Department Fish and Wildlife, if you have OSB's game logs, uh, Ryan Tag, who may or may not be interested in aggressiveness. So I think that's one of them.
Yeah, maybe you might be running the, the discussion on.
Yeah, because maybe OSP has another program that we can maybe complement in addition.
Yeah.
The only nice thing about ODFW is that if they do get involved, there is some funding and there is, they have, like you said, they, they have a pretty good process if they can get involved, but again, there is no guarantee that that study is gonna come out the way you want, so that, that would be the, that would be the thing to find out, is if Burns had the study done, what were the results, and maybe a couple other towns.
And the worst case, case that what, worst case we're left exactly the way we are?
Yep.
That's worst case, which isn't obviously gonna kill us, but, um, you know, at least we, well, yeah, hopefully. But, um, you know, I, I'm really fine with tabling this for more discussion with Burns, that you're pulling in a work session with, um, Officer Tag and Mr. Rur, and see if that, we go from there.
Bring them in, do a work session?
Yeah, I would be more than happy to do that.
All right, when you wanna schedule it?
Well, why don't I contact them and see what, what.
No, I'm just talking to Ryan.
And you guys can always put it before one of your regular scheduled meetings too.
We can schedule it this Thanksgiving, right?
Okay. Schedule it this Thanksgiving, right? Okay. Tag, who was you on, I said, oh, you're, okay.
All right, we'll table, table this one.
Yep.
If I figure out a date.
They, they need a motion for that.
Motion made in seconds, open the paper.
Aye.
Okay. Will you oppose?
Move on to the next one.
All right, let's move on down. Next resolution, 966, matter of setting compensation.
So, brief discussion, where we have to have a broken manager since July, there's still a signature. I, I fully believe that there's, you know, from my name, there's a handle. We vote for these next two resolutions, um, and the agenda, I think, as amended, says that we need to follow on more.
Resolutions cannot have to go to that process.
Okay.
Oh, that was the ordinance.
That was the ordinance, yes.
Okay, so, um.
The way, way I understand this, we have to, we have to end up with being a short term, you know, yeah.
The term on them right now is both six months from the end.
And it determined through.
Okay, by the way, was it council?
So.
And were you at people's line?
Now, you gotta do two separately.
Well, I make a motion to approve Resolution 966 in the matter of setting compensation for director of public works assistant.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All three of them.
Sandy.
Sandy.
I'll keep my mouth.
And you said all in favor, Mayor?
Yeah, yeah.
Aye.
Will you oppose?
Next one is nine, uh, 967.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 967, where town manager or engineer Darryl Anderson offers to assist the new town manager, Michelle Perry.
I'll say it.
Motion's made in seconds, open the paper.
Aye.
Okay.
Oppose.
Oppose? Okay. Which are done. Now we're going down to mayor, council, and mayor updates. Uh, I have nothing. Any of the council have anything?
No, sir.
I'll keep it really short. I have to take a kid down.
Wait a minute.
Hold on, we got some.
Um, but I appreciate Sheriff Taylor being here because I, um, have been wanting to bring up something that I just want to put out there.
Which one's it's that?
That, um, you know, we need to start looking at, I mean, a fourth officer. We have roughly six months left in our fiscal year. Um, and the process to get to, to get a new officer is not a fast process. So, um, I would like us to put that on the agenda for next meeting, to look at our budget. We are still trying to figure out our budget and where is that exactly? Um, I would ask Sheriff Taylor, I would assume he would not be opposed to a fourth officer?
No, Sheriff Taylor and I talked about it pretty extensively.
I wouldn't be opposed to a fifth or sixth officer.
But the main thing is I've gotta get with Darryl, is we need to try to look at the budget. And the last thing I want to do is hire a fourth officer and tell him in six months that we can afford a heavy for next year. So that is something, the reason why it's been planned out is, one, we're waiting for a town manager, and two, we're still waiting to make sure that we can sustain that fourth officer when he goes to work here. Because I don't want to be the one that has to tell that officer six months after he's worked here that he no longer has a position.
And actually pay for four months of training if it is not a certified.
Exactly.
I didn't hear you say anything.
And also pay for four months of training.
Said we don't want to pay for four months of training if it's an uncertified officer is hired.
Well, and that's why I want to, I want to have the discussion. I want to, you know, that gives Darryl some time to look into the budget. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think that policing is going to be something we're gonna ever not need more of. And, um, you know, as for next year's budget, I think it's something that we need to make happen. We have four officers with the town, well, more than that budget. Yes, I understand there's a K differential, but I think it's something that, um, is a priority. We're not going to have lower time rates as our town expands. It's going to ever be ever increasing. And, and we certainly need a fourth officer. Um, we have two that are coming on board here in-
December 6th.
Couple weeks, so, you know, uh, that process has taken us some time. It's just the way it goes. So if we start having discussions now, I think that, um, we can get moving forward with that sooner or later. Not wait until we hit that budget year for next year. So I, I think it needs to start being, I mean, we're talking much of discussion, so, and I just think it needs to be.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the town's wastewater treatment permit, our national pollution discharge elimination system permit, it expires in May. Uh, we have to have the due application in by December 3rd. We've been working on it because it includes that wastewater to Tred Rock to be discussed. I need a signature tomorrow morning sometime.
I will be there.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing. Mr. Mayor and town council, thank you so much for sponsoring Elks at the Theater on December 21st. So I hope to see all of you there if you're in town, and be sure to bring your rolled up white socks, snowball fight. If you don't want to miss it.
We all have long hair for cleanup and ushering. I didn't know people do that.
Yes, last year we got 168 pairs of socks that got donated to the food bank. This year they're going to Lake County, uh, share the warmth. So, thank you very much.
That's a Saturday.
Which day?
Saturday the 21st at 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock.
It's really fun.
It is very fun.
Okay, now, will, uh, Michelle, you have anything, Dad?
No.
Are you sure?
Not this time.
Okay, if there's nothing else, then we will adjourn council at, uh, 5:16.